Hello, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting. I call the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, December 13th, to order at 7:32 PM. A motion to open the meeting?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Roll call of Mr. Gito.
Here.
McChrisky.
Here.
Vice Chair Cave.
Here.
Mr. Carrara.
Here.
And I'm here. I ask that you stand and salute our flag if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with Governor Baker's declaration of June 16th, 2021, granting certain pandemic-related authorizations related to public board and town meetings and recently extended until March 31st, 2023, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google Meets. The meeting may be recorded by SMAC, cable television, and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stotontv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting. If live broadcast or live streaming is unsuccessful, times or approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. So before we get started, we would like to welcome the newest member, our town manager. I would like to say a few words of welcome. We're great that it's great that you're here. We're looking forward to your insight and your support.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're quite welcome. That's Thomas Coulter, our new town manager. Does anyone else want to make a comment? Would you like to say a few words of introduction?
Madam Chair, as a former politician, of course, I would. Quite simply, I just want to thank the board for your confidence, for your consideration. This is one of the most exciting times of my career. This is my last stop on the career path, and as promised, I'll give you 68 years of my hardest work and all of my experiences in the town of Stoughton. Most of all, I'd like to thank my colleague, Mr. Tisdale. What he has done on behalf of the town of Stoughton, filling in when you had a need for an interim, and to do so so nobly and so professionally is astounding. Within five minutes of being here, Mark came into my office to say, "For the good of Stoughton, let's continue the continuity." And I now see him more than I see my wife, which is very scary. But I'm enjoying his leadership, his knowledge, his institutional capabilities, and I can promise you, and I know Mark feels the same way, a seamless transition, and you'll have a very potent one-two punch as we tackle some of the challenges and the opportunities facing the town. So to the board, thank you for your confidence. I won't let you down. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Town Manager Coulter. But I would like to say yesterday was your first day, and you gave a great you hosted and facilitated a very nice luncheon where we gave kudos to Mark Tisdale, and so much so that he was so embarrassed, but I'm sure he appreciated because he said he did.
Well, Madam Chair, I delivered it just as he wrote it.
Touche. Touche. So without further, without further ado, we'll move right along to citizens' comments. But before we start, I would like to remind everyone of our some of the ground rules for the agenda items which I, as the chair, would like to voice as a preface before we begin. Citizens' comments is an opportunity for the board to hear from the public, but shouldn't be a dialogue or debate. I therefore encourage the board members and the town manager to listen to the comments made and make note of those that want to follow up on or that warrant further discussions. If it's an item that needs further discussion, I'll put it on the agenda for further future meeting. If it requires follow-up, we can direct the town manager to do so. If the comment doesn't require board discussion at a future meeting or follow-up by the town manager, I would request that we simply try to say thank you and continue to the next speaker and then on to the board's business. I'll try to give everyone all the time they need, but we have a full agenda, as we always do. So I'll ask the speakers to limit their comments to one or two minutes, no more than Anyone addresses the board should refrain from making personal charges or disparaging remarks or from verbal attacks upon the character or motives of the members of town boards, of town staff, of citizens of the community, and/or each other. All speakers are encouraged to present their remarks during public comment in a respectful manner. Whenever possible, please try to refrain from mentioning the names of private individuals on your public comments. Thank you for that. Moving right to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens that would like to comment? I see, I see three raise their hands, so Mr. Lurie, please step forward, state your name and address.
David Lurie, 18 Robinette Road. So if I have compliments and kudos, do I get like six minutes?
Is it on?
No.
Does this better?
This is much better.
All right, thank you. So I have thank yous and kudos that I wanted to extend. As you know, I'm involved with the Little Theater of Stoughton, and your board back in April allowed us to operate with the building as is for any kind of functions that we thought or deemed necessary to help move the ball forward with our with our troupe. And Jan Jones came into a lot of materials from this very, very generous woman who passed away and donated all of her belongings, you know, to our troupe to be able to sell in a yard sale. So we thought, oh, let's let's put that together. So you with that, we were able to, through the hard work of Paul Jaffoon and Arthur Coelho, they not only made us gave us access, but they also made sure it was safe. They took care of the floors in there. It was a terrific experience. I do want to mention that for anybody looking for marketing advice, if we had back-to-back weekends in which we did the yard sale. So the first weekend was in the mid-'50s without a furnace. We were able to make a lot of money. It was terrific. When you try to do the same event when it's in the '30s or just barely breaking 30 without a furnace, you don't make much money, if not anything at all. I just thought it would be important to express that. There's also some more thank yous. Because we knew it was going to be cold, we brought hot chocolate, and we were able to give that away at the parade. And just so you know, Mike Varner was taking over for Mark Snyder as EMC because he had a medical emergency, and on short notice, he did a terrific job. It was fabulous, and we were able to to watch a really great parade there. But the other is, we also turned the opportunity that even though it was a very cold building, we were able to get SMAC through Rob and Luke to come down and film us. It was an interview. I recommend everybody on the board check it out. It's going to be aired like a public service announcement. Rob did an excellent job of turning that interview into a very polished public service announcement, did a terrific job on it. But it it really expresses, I think, what the Little Theater thinks would be ideal as best use for that building. So I hope that you do get a chance to take a listen and really see the vision of how that space could really be brought to the best possible use. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lurie. I saw some other hands. Oh, Teresa, hi. Teresa Tapper, please state your name and your address, please.
Hi, Teresa Tapper, 26 Roseglan Street. I hate public speaking, so this is a big deal for me to even stand up here, but I do want to tell you that I'm understanding that some money is being considered to be set aside for DEI for the town, and I just want to say, as a town resident and as an employee of the town as well, I want I wish that you would, or I'm asking you to please consider and support this. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tapper. Oh, Mrs. Sabree, please step forward. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Betty Sabree. I live at 35 Ronald Way in Stoughton, and...
Look closer to the board, please.
My name is Betty Sabree, and I live at 35 Ronald Way in Stoughton. And just as Teresa spoke, I'm also not a really good public speaker, so I took a little note. I just wanted to applaud and ask the Select Board to please consider funding a DEI either consultant or officer position within Stoughton as it's really needed to address many issues racial, gender, LGBTQ, ethnic, cultural issues that people talk about. However, there's no vessel or no person identified to accept those conversations, to work on them, or to direct those issues to. So I would really ask you to please consider funding that position.
Thank you, Mrs. Sabree. Anyone else? Okay. What about online? I may have missed that. All right. Thank you, everyone. Moving right along to Select Board comments. Do we have any Select Board comments? With their, oh, Mr. McChrisky, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I apologize I wasn't able to be with you at the last meeting, but I'd like to open up briefly by putting Mr. Tisdale on the hot seat again and just offer Mark my thanks as an individual member of this board. And it, the job becomes difficult at times, as we all know, and Mark signed up to do the acting town manager as well as still having all his normal responsibilities as a full-time employee as well. And Mark, just from me personally, thank you for being the person that you are. I saw a side of you that I like you even more, you know? You know, that you really held this thing together. You know, you held it together, and it can be trying at times, you know, and we all know, but you did a great job. I look forward to, I won't be on this board anymore, but the day that you are sworn in as the permanent town manager, what, six to eight years from now?
We agree on six.
Six, oh, you guys agreed on six, okay. So I look forward to being at that swearing in because, Mark, you've earned it, and you're capable as a town manager now, and I hope that you stay with us until that time. You know, I'd look forward to that. So thank you for everything that you've done, you know, in helping us out. Tom, welcome.
Did he just say, "I won't be here"? He said, "Don't stop."
Yeah. And Mr. Coulter, I was very pleased to serve on the subcommittee. When we were looking at applicants and listening to proposals, and Mr. Cave will remember fondly that I said, "My mind's made up." From your first step, you had done research on the town. You knew some of the issues that we're facing, and your presentation, knowledge, and plan to hit the ground running was just remarkable. And we all say here at different times, we've all hired a couple of town managers, but I've been here a long time and never seen a presentation like that, so I am thrilled to have you on board, look forward to working with you. And I've stated 100 times, you know, I want a strong town manager, so I'm looking forward to, you know, watching what you can do, and, you know, and we're going to do some great things together.
Thanks, Mr. T.
No, thank you. Madam Chair, I would like to throw you to the town manager, whichever one wants to do it. I've been vocal, you know, since coming back to this board and this stint in 2019. We have a bylaw in town that says no commercial vehicles can be parked on public ways overnight, period. It's not the winter parking ban. This is for commercial motor vehicles. In the commuter rail parking lot that abuts Morton Square, there is one to two truck tractors. These are tractor trailers without a trailer, using that parking lot as their permanent parking space. They're there, they're not being sighted, nothing's being done that I can see. I've been watching it before I made this public comment, but our neighborhoods are not parking spaces for commercial motor vehicles. We have another one on 138, and this is I'm asking for immediate attention to this. Route 138, at that point, is a state road. We have no control over that road in our role as street commissioners, but the adjacent land is being used basically as a trucking terminal. There's two tractor trailers, possibly three, I've seen as many as three, and they park there overnight. During the day, when the tractor trailers are gone, there's three personal vehicles. So they're using it as their personal parking space. And, you know, they're facing the wrong side of the road so that the tractor trailer, when it leaves, it's in the oncoming lane of traffic. All right? So that's a safety hazard. I'm asking that the DPW take immediate action to go up with Jersey barriers and to coordinate off, and that we start writing tickets on these commercial vehicles, you know, that are parked in, you know, residential neighborhoods on the streets. We did do a pretty good job for a while down at Bob's Furniture on Campanelli Drive, but again, they have trucks that come in, trailers, loaded trailers that come in from Bob's Furniture location in Connecticut, and they drop those trailers, they sit there overnight. And again, it's not enough room for a trucking terminal. They're over utilizing the site, and our roads take the brunt. It's not the citizens of Stoughton's job to provide parking spaces for commercial vehicles. Rent a piece of property, pay taxes like everybody else. So the biggest one is that I hope we'll start enforcing these, and the most part is that we get immediate action on blocking that piece of property off. It's on Route 138 across from the AVO Fence Company, if anyone knows that, and this is, we got to start, you know, taking these things in, so. But my last one is, we talked a while back about the Amory. Scott's been vocal about the Amory. Madam Chair is aware, we had conversations with this with a member of the Redevelopment Authority. The Redevelopment Authority is interested in doing something with us jointly. I would like to have that placed on the earliest agenda, you know, so that we can meet here with the Redevelopment Authority and come up with maybe a collaboration of ideas, maybe have somebody come back with a presentation. And in that, I would ask Mr. Carrara if he would, you know, consider being involved with that because he has been an advocate for that property for some time. So I'd like to get that scheduled as soon as possible.
Not to interrupt you, Mr. McChrisky, but Steve, Assistant Chairman here, Steve Cave and I are both appointed to a committee for the use of that.
Okay. Well, let's get them, or either that, or whatever way, Madam Chair, you want to handle it.
I'm open to anything.
Right, so then I, then what I would suggest then is that you folks reach out to the Redevelopment Authority, let's get a meeting scheduled so that you can at least collaborate on some ideas, and then come back to us because it has been sitting out there since July, the moment we last spoke about this. So I'd love to get this going. We're in December now, so let's see what we can, you know, come up with, and just get some ideas, come back and see what we want to do. I think having the Redevelopment Authority work with us on this will give us a great opportunity to see how we work together with the Redevelopment Authority. They have a very aggressive urban renewal plan that we've tried to discuss, and it's a heavy lift at this point. And we've, I've mentioned personally that I want to know what they want the property for, what they're going to do with it, how they're going to pay for it, and what's the benefit to the town of Stoughton. So I think this would be a good idea as to see how we put those thoughts together, how we work together, and what the end product will be. And if we do that now, I think we can, you know, plant the seeds for what could be a very good working relationship with the Redevelopment Authority. Years ago, when I was chair, we had that relationship when we had IKEA come in and Target, and we were a partner to the Board of Selectmen in that process because the Redevelopment Authority has some money that they could spend on traffic studies that the board didn't have to pay. So we can get a great relationship going with the Redevelopment Authority, but somebody has to be the first person to jump into the pool and say, "Come on in." So I'm asking that we get that done as soon as possible. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Coulter, yes.
Mr. McChrisky, I'll follow up on both of those initiatives to schedule appointments, and we'll take care of the parking issue tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
And then Vice Chair Cave, you were saying?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got, just, I just want to give the Select Board a heads up and be going to be sending out a couple of, two articles I'd like to include in the upcoming annual town meeting. One is something I brought last year, but I brought it far too late. But this is an amendment to section C8-3 of the Town Charter, which is labeled "Polling Places." I'm looking for a change. The original language is "A polling place shall be made available in each of the precincts for all elections." And I'm looking to change the word "in" to "for." "A polling place shall be made available for each of the precincts for all elections." This is a recommendation that had come from our Charter Review Committee. They shortly after making this recommendation and, I believe, voting on it, they found that they didn't have jurisdiction over this question. And I spoke with with the chair of that committee, and I'm in full agreement with it. I've spoken informally with with members, or I should say stakeholders within the schools. They're in favor of it. I've spoken informally with the town clerk, the clerk's office, they're in favor of it. I think overall, I think there's a great many benefits to doing this, not the least of which is that we will actually, with this change, we will no longer be violating the charter as we currently are because we don't currently have a polling location in each of the precincts. There's two precincts that do not have polling locations in them, and so people leave their precinct in order to to vote. So as we've been in violation of this, I think, since the 1970s, it would be good to bring us into line and actually follow the rules we set for ourselves. Additionally, by having the availability of having a polling location available for each precinct, that does allow us to consolidate polling locations, move them out of the schools potentially, and allow for, for, just providing safer schools in general. We'll also be able to, as I mentioned, consolidate the polling locations for smaller elections so that, so there's far less, far fewer resources being expended. We could be doing the same elections at a lower cost if we didn't have polling, poll workers spread out into several different schools. And if possible, it'd be nice, I think ultimately it might be nice to ultimately end up with one polling location for most of our elections at least. I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself. Step one is just let's let's change the charter change, and from there, I think we can solve a lot of the problems that we we do have with our polling. The other change is one that was recommended by by a citizen who was looking to find a consistent way for us to do any of our, sorry, this gives me, public hearings, thanks. Any of our public hearings. Currently, all of our boards and committees have essentially their own process, their own guidance. I think the only board actually that has any sort of requirements about their public hearings is the Planning Board, if I'm not mistaken. All others, what was it?
Zoning Board, too.
This is zoning board does as well. With with few exceptions, there's there are, there's not a whole lot of statutes statutes that have certain requirements about what a public hearing should look like, how it should be held, and how it should be advertised and so forth. So there was an effort, at least by by one citizen, to find a way to do that. I agree with the work that he's done and would like to champion that a little bit further. In speaking with town council, he did mention that we could either do this through a change to the charter or the board itself could actually make this change unilaterally to the extent that it would only, it would affect the boards under which we have some authority, right? So any board or committee that is appointed by us would be subject to these changes. But we do have boards and committees that are not subject, are not appointed by us, and I believe they should probably be following the same processes as well. So we would, if we were to agree with that, then we would move this to some sort of a charter change. I'm going to run these through town council, both of these, just to make sure that we're, everything is above board, there's no major issues, and hopefully bring these to you for our next scheduled meeting for you to consider. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cave. Mr. Carrara, anything?
Not at this time.
All righty. Let's move right along to, and I have no comments at this time, we'll move right along to town managers' comment.
Can you hear me? All right, cool. All right, first, some really good news. For 11 weeks, we've been without our police chief. She's been at the FBI Academy. She's recently graduated from the academy. That's a very prestigious program. I think like less than 1% or 2% of police chiefs actually get into that program. So there's a long ride up here. We're going to post it on Facebook as long as the town manager's okay with that, some more details, but we want to give her a big congratulations. That's a lot of work and effort. Her, sorry, this thing's checking out, and just want to give her a good round of applause. Some more good news. We applied Pam McCarthy and myself. We worked on a grant for the Community Compact for online permitting. As you know, that's coming. It's an article for this coming town meeting. We do have to get out of the '70s and '80s and get into current times with permitting, which means you don't necessarily have to come to Town Hall to file a permit, like most towns do. So we were, we have initiative to do that. We have vetted several companies out. There are surrounding towns that use one of the companies we're looking at, but we have received a $200,000 grant through the Community Compact for that. So that should pay a considerable amount of that online permitting cost. Last but not least, the treasurer collector, Paula Newt, would like to, like the water, sewer, and trash customers, to know that the FY23 second quarter water, sewer, and trash bills were mailed on November 15th, 2022. These bills have a due date of December 15th, 2022. Postmark date is not acceptable as payment made. Payments must be received in the collector's office or at the lockbox address in Medford on or before this date. All unpaid water, sewer, trash bouncers will have a $15 demand fee added to them, and interest will accrue at a rate of 14% from the due date. Also, the senior discount will be forfeited if the bill is not paid in full. If you have any additional questions, you can contact Paula herself. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Coulter, okay.
I haven't been here long enough to have a report, but I appreciate your opportunity.
All righty.
Next week, I'll be your information chief.
Thank you very much. Moving right along to our next agenda item, which is fiscal year 2024 operating budget. Before we jump right into the presentations, I would like to remind the board that we will be meeting weekly for the next two weeks. That's on Tuesday, upcoming Tuesdays. So this presentation will be at a macro level, it will be a high-level presentation and discussion, and it's really going to be considered a handoff from Mr. Tisdale to our new town manager, Mr. Coulter. The staff is unavailable today, but they will be available next week if we do have questions. So I wanted everyone to be mindful of that, that this is a high-level macro view of the budget. And with that said, Mr. Tisdale? And with that said, Mr. Tisdale.
Okay, thank you. Lena, if you could pull up the PowerPoint, if you have that handy?
Madam Chair.
Mr. McCrisky?
I forgot one of my little comments, if you'd let me just indulge me while Lena's bringing that up.
Yes, I will indulge you, she's.
I, I wanted to give a, add a girl to Lena as well.
Hey!
You know, we have had, this, we're a two-for-one. When Debra Blank came in, I said the same thing. I've been here long enough to see when somebody's catching on and doing everything, and Lena has stepped right into that role. So, congratulations, thank you for all the hard work Lena you've done, you know, since you've been here, and it can be challenging, but.
So, Mr. McCrisky, now that Lena's all set, she's settled, I agree, I concur with everything that you said.
Okay.
Keep coming back, Lena.
I, I also mirror, mirror what you're all saying. Lena's doing a fantastic job.
Yes, she is.
Picking up on things quickly, so, thank you, Lena. As everybody knows, this is the first presentation at the Town Manager level for the, the annual Town Manager Budget. What happens before this step is departments submit their, their budgets about a month before this, and depending how, how things are, you know, they can go quickly, or there can be many hours of work to get the, the budget to balance by going through lines of departments, things like that, revenues, different, different items. It's, it's the responsibility of the Town Manager to give you a budget by the end of December, December 31st. Then I believe you must have your budget submitted to the Finance Committee by the third Tuesday in January, according to the Charter. So, you typically have a little less than a month to get your, your job done and get it over to the Finance Committee. Typically, one, one of the goals here is, is, we've been through this before where Town Managers give you budgets that aren't balanced, and it starts turning into a very, a mess very quickly from, from the, from step one. So, what you see tonight is a balanced budget submitted to you, and you'll, you'll see as we go through this. It's not all great news, but it is a balanced budget. Next slide, Lena. I'd like to thank the budget team, the budget team. We kept it consistent from, from last year. Myself, Bill Roach, Town Accountant, thanks, Bill, very critical to that operation. Fran Bruton-Aity, she's here with us tonight, Director of Procurement, Deanna Chatsko, Director of Human Resources, Trish Shroffshire, I always mess her name up, Director of Information Technology, Paul Javoon, Director of Public Works, and Mary Jane Martin, the Assistant Town Accountant. I truly mean it, thank you very much. There was many, many hours and days spent going through this, this budget. Next slide, thanks. Going through the budget, there's always goals and objectives before you get into the budget. Sometimes those goals and objectives come from the Select Board, sometimes the Town Manager has their own goals and objectives, sometimes staff do, and it's up to the Town Manager to kind of balance all those goals and objectives in, in their budget presentation. Obviously, the, the first one is level or improve services for the public. That was one of the directions we gave staff this year. Produce a balanced FY24 budget. That's a goal of the Town Manager. That was my goal, to get you a balanced budget. Increase efficiencies and tight spending patterns, that's always applicable every year. Increased cost analysis of our self-insured healthcare system. You'll see a lot more detail in this later in the presentation. It was very important that we, we got a good handle on that this year. Increased analysis and understanding of our enterprise accounts. In the past, we've, they've been easier to operate, easier to understand. You'll see later in the, in the presentation that we, we really needed to focus on them a little more this year for, for certain reasons. Reasonable consideration for local revenue and growth. Projections for labor negotiations and for non-union employees. This year, we, we went in with a 2% increase. Last year, it was a 1.75% increase. Obviously, that's subject to contract negotiations. Increase emphasis on public safety, police and fire departments, you'll see. Increase emphasis on permitting and public records requests. Increase emphasis on diversity, equity, and inclusion in town operations. Increase emphasis on town-wide energy efficiency. You'll, you'll see that in the DPW budget. Increase emphasis on Commission of Disability Services. You're familiar with that. As you know, a couple months ago, they came in, that commission came in front of you asking for a line item increase in their budget. Continued preparedness for cyber security issues, that's an every-year thing. Increase labor efficiencies, we have some, we do have some new positions. We have some salary comparables that we've, we've done, and some reclassifications. We've also restructured some positions and we, we reallocated some positions to different departments. Next slide, okay, thank you. As we mentioned, it's, it's a balanced budget in front of you tonight, but it is an estimate at this point. As you know, different revenue sources change, you know, the Board may have different changes they, you want to put in, in the budget, so the budget does change from now to town meeting. What most likely will change is the indirect costs for the enterprise accounts. The way those are calculated, we'll get more actual numbers as, as the year goes on. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bill. Norfolk County Retirement Contribution, we get the, the actual numbers around January. Southeast Regional Technical School Costs, as you know, we have to pay those for, for students that go there. We get those costs around March. Norfolk County Agricultural High School Costs, that comes in around February. MWRA Assessments that we have every year, those estimates come in around February. State Aid, the cherry sheet, as we call it, that comes in January or February 2023. The winter snow ice deficit to be raised. Hopefully, there's not a lot of that, but that is something that does change from year to year. And then obviously, union contracts, those, as those get settled, we may have to adjust line items in, in the budget. Next slide? Okay, thanks, Lena. She's good over there. She's really, really right, right on top of things. Alright. So, now we got the projected revenue summary. As you know, property taxes are the largest revenue for the town, and then it goes to state aid, and you got local receipts and, and so on, things of free, free cash. The exact numbers update, we don't really need to talk about, but generally, those are the, the major contributors to, to our local revenue. What we did this year for our local receipts are very similar to the past years. We did estimate 95% of the FY22 actual numbers, with some exceptions, obviously, for ambulance fees. We've been tracking in the right direction there and making more and more money every year. Excise Taxes, we went 98%. We looked at recent trends. Meals Taxes, same reasons. The pilot agreements that we have in place, those are pretty consistent, so we feel like we can have a pretty high percentage for those. And licenses and permits, we've been very active, and there's been plenty of licensing and permits even through COVID, and they continue now. So, we, we felt comfortable with 97% on that. We did add a 1% increase to the cherry sheet, which is about an average, and sometimes it's more than that, but we felt 1% was a conservative estimate for an increase in the cherry sheet. The next slide is pretty much what I just said, but it's a fancy little graphic that shows you where those pots of money are in, in the total pot. And as you can see, the blue is the property taxes, the, the orange is the state aid, and the, the yellow, I think I'm colorblind, the, the light yellow or light orange is the local receipts. In summary for, next slide, Lena? In summary, for municipal departments, which consist of cultural and recreation, human services, public works, public safety, and just general government departments, like an assessors department or something like that, we went up 4%, which is $1.18 million. The education costs, which are estimated, I believe the school committee are voting on their budget tonight, but we've had multiple conversations with them, and we're very comfortable with the numbers that are in this budget presentation. They've gone up 2%. Joint expenses, those have, have jumped up a lot, and you'll see later in the presentation why those are plus 8.5%, which equates to a total general fund increase of 4.1%. The, the next slide, again, just, we're, we're getting into the budget expenses, we're just putting it on a pie chart to show people visual image. The joint costs are 26%, second most in the, the category. The highest is the public school category, and the third, taking third place is public safety at 14% on the, on the pie chart. Next slide. Little budget history to talk about. The last 10 years, we've put the percentage increases, starting with this year, which is 4% going backwards. You can see we're at 4% this year, 3.5% last year, 1.6, 1.5, and so on. This year, we do have municipal increase of 4% as we just, just stated. Growth calculations, which is another key point of, of the budget. We've used the five-year calculations, which we've been using for the last three or four years. Free cash, the Finance Committee has a free cash policy of reducing our dependence on free cash by 300,000 per year. Last year, we used 2.6 million in the operating budget. This year, it's 2.3 million. The certified free cash, to put it in perspective, this year was 5.1 million. Typically, the excess money goes to funding articles with cash or putting the money in, in stabilization accounts. Joint costs, plus 8.5%. You can see the trends for the last handful of years before that, 6.1, 1.43, 0.53. Huge increase this year. Again, we'll, we'll get into the details a little later on. The enterprise accounts and the debt service, I obviously had a typo there, I didn't put the FY21, 22, or 23 numbers in there, but this year, we're at 1.8%, which is, which is normal for, for debt service. Next slide. As we mentioned, the budget is balanced with the schools, with the school side put into this. So, again, unless something extraordinary changes from their meeting tonight, we don't expect to change the school side. One, one point is, is, I made this, this point was at the front of the slide, was you have to have a cutoff point at some point when you're doing this presentation. This was as of 11/29/22, when we're originally going to talk about it at your previous Select Board meeting. Since then, you've hired a Town Manager, that's, his line might be slightly higher than what's in this budget, so we have to tweak that at your level. Things like that. There's a couple little estimate changes. I'm sure Bill might have a, a list of two or three other things that have, have tweaked since we prepared this budget presentation. The Board also has some positions you were talking about, different things you wanted to do with the budget that we would have to tweak the budget and modify that accordingly. When this was prepared, we had $22,000 excess in the green to play with. The initial deficit for the budget was, was, I thought we're beyond these days, because last year's budget went pretty, pretty smoothly. This year, it was over a million dollars. Remember, four years ago, we had a roughly $5 million deficit when I did this last time, which was, was very intriguing. Over the last few years, the previous Town Manager, Robin, she's done, did a great job with the budget, getting it, you know, getting it down, and I think last year was the easiest budget year because, because of the work and effort she put in, into the budget. This year was back over a million, and there's some, some reasons for that, and we'll, we'll get into that. So, we literally went through each department's budget, brought department heads in, sometimes multiple times, made a lot of phone calls, and reduced lines from 5,000 to 4,000, or 2,000 to 1,000, I mean, that was all over the place, because we, we had to find money. And we, we put our revenues up as high as we possibly could without being, you know, dumb, and it is what it is at that point. So, we balanced it. The good news is that it's done. We went through that. I don't think any department head was frustrated. I think everybody left pretty happy, and I think we're okay. What did we change? Like we just explained, expense lines. The way we do that is we don't just take money away from a line. We have a method. We look at the actuals today, we look at the 2022 actuals, we talk to the department head. Something just doesn't seem right with this line. Why did we increase it? Maybe we can, can we look at, can we keep it the, the line it was last year, and why did you increase it? And a lot of conversations happened to get the, the lines decreased. Buyout lines, not the best thing to zero these things out, but we, we can make it happen. We've done this before. Robin, over the last two years, wanted the budget buyouts, right? So, if you knew somebody was retiring or leaving, you'd buy them out, and then you could hire somebody right away. Generally, what we're doing here is, most positions take two or three months to hire anyways, depending, sometimes longer, depending if it's a public safety position or not. So, we feel that with that gap in hiring somebody, that we can afford the buyouts, like we've done in previous years, to pay those employees from that, from that line. Advertising costs went down a lot. Last year, in the budget, they went up because the company we had, I believe Patriot Ledger, gave us astronomical costs for advertising, hundreds of dollars, as opposed to the previous cost of $12.85, I think is, is the cost for most of our legal ads. We put those back down to the previous numbers because they've given us, us an agreement to go to 12.85 for one more year, two more years, indefinitely, indefinitely, we believe. So, at least for this budget year, it's, it's at 12.85. So, so that's a good news. As you can think about it, there's a lot of departments that have that line, planning boards, you know, building departments for the zoning board, conservation commissions, those kind of boards. The local revenue estimates increased where appropriate. Obviously, we, we already talked about this, the ambulance fees, the cherry sheet, things of that nature. Salary lines for new positions. There were some departments who put full-time new positions in, and we, we cut them down to halftime. Some situations, we would have just loved to keep that full-time position, and other, other situations, we feel like we might have improved the budget. For example, the building department with a building inspector position. By having a part-time position now, we feel like we can still hire somebody who's actually got a job in the trade, somebody very qualified and can still do the, the building inspections, and we'll, we'll get into more detail on what that entails in a little bit. Also, any capital purchases, purchases of $50,000 or less, we, we took away from the operating budget, and we'll have capital articles for it. Again, that's a change from last year. Robin wanted to build those into the budget. Anything 50,000 or less, makes sense, put it into, into the operating budget, so you don't have to have an article at town meeting. We just didn't have the luxury this year to do that. There was, there's just, there was no room for that. That was one of the, the ways we balanced the budget, by taking the capital articles out, and we can fund them, the capital costs out of the budget and fund them with capital articles. Okay, thank you, Lena. Alright, joint costs. This is a very, a very important part of the presentation. There's some key parts to joint, to the joint costs. We have the debt service excluded, which would be things like high school and fire station projects, things of that nature, and then just regular debt service for other articles. Health insurance, 8.4%. Townwide expenses and insurance. Retirement, which is what the town pays to Norfolk County when somebody retires, we have to actually put into that account. Public health subsidy, sewer fund subsidy, and then your total joint costs are up 8.5%. I'm going to pull out three of those, those areas right now. Three, the three that were critical in this, in this budget, in, in what made this budget so difficult to work on this year were, first of all, the health insurance. There's a trend going on this year, we don't know if it's We don't know if it's going to go on for future years, but we do know for a fact what we're putting into the health fund, which is self-insured, right? We have a health fund of six or seven million for years now. You've probably heard that number. You know, we pay our own claims out of it. Anything over $110,000, we have stop-loss insurance. So if somebody has a really bad situation going on, and their bills are over 110,000, the town only pays 110. We have a lot of claims this year that are below, just below $100,000. And we can try to figure out why, but the only reasonable reason for this is because a lot of the elective surgeries couldn't happen for two or three years. And now, a lot of people are able to get those elective surgeries, those costs that are just under 100,000. Again, is that the total reason? Probably not. We don't really know why. All we know is that what we're putting into the account isn't paying the bills every month. So we have six or seven million dollars. We're okay for a couple of years, but if we don't tackle this problem right now, that account's going to go to zero, and then we've got really big problems. So you'll see a pretty large increase this year compared to previous years of about 8.4% in that department, in that budget for health insurance. To give you an idea, the last four years, we went up 0%, 2%, 2%, and 2.5%. So the costs are going up, and we're going like this. We've got to start catching up. There's another way to catch up is plan change. So we need more money in the pot to pay the bill, right? So one way is increasing the percentage that the town pays into the pot, and employees do, and the other way is plan change. So things like co-pays. If you have like a $15 copay now, and you make it a $20 or $25 copay, or deductibles or things of that nature, that is more money into the pot. Does it make people happy? No. But we do have to figure out this problem, because we are not covering our expenses in that account. The sewer fund subsidy, half a million dollar subsidy to the general fund this year. And the water fund, I'm going to skip around a little bit here. The water fund is $1.3 million. It's not going to be a subsidy, because there is $3 million in the MWRA TIF account that we can transfer in. We have about $3 million in that MWRA account. So we can transfer in the subsidy from this year of 1.3 million from that MWRA TIF to balance that out. So we're not feeling it in this budget, per se, but it's a problem, because the 3 million isn't going to be around forever. You can do maybe two years of this, but we've got to figure that out. We've got to figure out that problem. Again, these enterprise accounts need to operate. They've got to at least be level, right? We've got to break even. It's like a business. Each one of them's a small business. And I mean, we're digging into it a little bit, but we do know, and one recommendation is going to be, obviously, rate changes for the users of the water and sewer enterprise accounts. The sewer fund, just a side note, not as bad as the water, half a million dollars. About half of that, half a million dollars, 250,000, is one year of bonding the Pocktree Sewer Project, because it's not online right now. We're not collecting betterments from that project. So we have one year of carrying about $250,000 of debt, and that's part of the half a million. So that should not be there next year. Just to kind of put everything in summary, the health insurance, by increasing it to 8.4%, adds $907,000 to our budget that we have to find. Okay, we found it, but that's how much we had to add. Between that, the sewer of a half a million, and the water of 1.3 million, if I pick three things out of this budget that we need to focus on and prioritize a plan of attack is those three items. Because what happens is when you have a subsidy with those situations, where do you find the money? I'm calling up Fran, and I'm calling up Bill, all the department heads, to look at their expenses. We've got to get the expenses down to balance this out, and it's not the right way to budget. There's a reason for it. This guy's phenomenal, right? I mean, so, meeting up with him for the first two hours, one of his priorities, I told him, I said, "This is one of my priorities, is to figure this out." I'm like, "I'm not getting a good handle on it right now, but there's an issue with it, and we've got to figure it out." Sitting down with Tom and Bill and the rest of the team, something clicked, and somebody said something, and then we fed off it, and as a team, we just said, "All right, there it is." We've been using, what we've been using every year is the retained earnings for the water department and the sewer department. We've actually made money in those departments in the past. Any extra money we don't spend out of those departments goes to retained earnings. So they keep on flopping from year to year to year, and we're not really feeling it until this year, because the pot ran out. There is no more retained earnings. So now, it's like a big whack all at once. That's what's happening this year. So we don't have those retained earnings to play with anymore. So, and we have our departments actually using their budgets accordingly. So like our water department is spending their budget that they had approved at town meeting, which they should. They justified it. So that's not the right way to continue. We need to look at rate increases for water and sewer. Nothing, I wouldn't recommend a one- or two-year approach, but something maybe three to five years to kind of ease the burden on the ratepayers. All right, next slide, Lena? All right, so the enterprise accounts, we talked about this just now. There's not much more to add, other than the good news, very good news from the Cedar Hill. So all the money that we've invested in Cedar Hill, we have retained earnings now in Cedar Hill. They're very consistent, and you'll see there's some different changes. The manager is asking in his budget, and I think we can afford it, because we do have retained earnings. They're making money. They're running that department very well. Public health, not, something to focus on. This year, we're okay. We've got a subsidy of 25,000, which is, again, it's in the red, but it's close to break even. But this year, we're also using like $328,000 from the ARPA funds you approved last year to fund that department. Next year, that department will be roughly 350, 360 in the red. So that's another enterprise account that's not making money, something we need to think about for the future. Next slide. All right. So there's been years now that we haven't really added new positions. We are really stretching a lot of people thin here, keep on adding more duties to everybody. It is time that we actually, we do not want an influx of people just leaving town. It's going to, there's nobody applying for jobs anymore in towns. I don't know why. I think it's just the type of thing where people come in, and, "Oh, I've got to actually come to work in a public building, so I've got to drive there, then I have to talk to people." That's not what people do anymore, apparently. I don't know. So then, we just can't get people to apply to these jobs, and we post them everywhere, MMA, you know, all the websites. If there's a certain organization that we're part of, like for a planner or something like that, we post it on the planning websites and all that. So we need to keep the good people we have, and we do need to create some new positions where needed. The first position is in the clerk's office. They came in front of me with a full-time public records clerk. Because of budget constraints, I did cut that down to halftime. I think the clerk would like the full-time, but again, there just wasn't money in the budget for that. The idea behind the public records clerk is, we literally get bombarded with public records requests right now, and there's really no organized way to handle those. They come into the clerk's office, and then they go to the departments, and we just hope that everybody fulfills the request. And there's just no way to really pull that in and organize it. The police department is asking for a deputy police chief. They have also been bombarded by public records requests, but they're different than the ones that come to town hall. They're confidential, they take a ton of work and effort, and we all know what type of issues we're talking about. So the police department has requested a deputy police chief in the budget. The fire department's requesting three new firefighters. They have four groups of firefighters. One has 15, the other three have 14. The other 14s require them to sometimes deflect mutual calls to all the towns, and there is a good analysis, I'm not sure if you received this or not, but that Mike Carroll is prepared. Essentially, by not deflecting those calls, which he believes he can do by having an extra person on each one of those shifts, you get about 250,000 of extra revenue per year. It pretty much pays for the firefighter. And also, he was able to reduce his overtime line down by about 85,000, I believe, because of having the three extra firefighters. There's a minimum manning per shift, I believe, of 11. So when people are on vacation, sick, or whatever, that also gives them flexibility on those other groups, where he doesn't have to use as much overtime. So it made sense to me. It's not a huge moneymaker, but it does make money when you do the numbers out. Mike's got a very good analysis that he prepared and sent to me. I can forward it over to the board for your next meeting, if you want to review it and analyze it. The building department, this was something I put forward as part of development services. I see this as a huge need. I originally had it as a full-time position myself. And actually, going through the process, I had to cut it back down to halftime, which in retrospect, I think might be a good idea, because we're going to be able to find somebody like we do with our plumbing and wiring inspectors, somebody who might own their own business or has a job and in the trade, really is in the know, and we can hire somebody to do those building inspections. We have a building commissioner. We have a very active building department that gets a ton of building permits in. There's a ton of inspections that have to occur. It's a very active office. A lot of the public comes to that office. There's lines of people out there sometimes. Our building commissioner should not be looking at how many studs are in the roofs, how many nails are in each stub, is there enough insulation around the roof, that kind of stuff. He needs to be in reviewing and approving building permits and keeping that moving. It's good business development for that to happen, and it's what should happen for him. So the building inspector will be a position that's beneath him, that will complement him, and mostly be doing those inspections. Public works, the labor truck driver, that was part of a contract. That was rolled into their previous contract negotiated, that they actually added labor truck driver. And the Cedar Hill is adding an assistant superintendent full-time. So the total FTEs is 7.08 for the town side. The next slide, Lena, is restructured positions. Not going further? Maybe just X out of it and click on it again? All right, the next category is restructured positions. Restructured positions are not new hires. They're not new positions. They're positions that have been restructured. For example, in the board of health department, as part of their contract negotiation, oh, go forward, one more. Here we go. All right. So as part of their contract negotiations in the past, the senior clerk position moves to a program administrator, one position in the building department upon a retirement. We will have a retirement this year. That also triggers a change in the building department. The program admin position goes to a senior clerk position for that same reason. Note, it's not a new position, it's just a change in title in those departments. The building department, the CEO of weights and measures stipend. We now, the state doesn't take on that service anymore in our town. The state used to do that service. Now, we have a ready and willing employee who's been proactive, getting trained, taking the certifications to do weights and measures in our town. So he'll be doing those. We've been buying the equipment for that. You know, you go inside the gas stations, you know, you've got the person signing off on the volumes for the gas stations. You go inside the grocery stores with the weights and measures, make sure the weights are working. That's what they do. That line's always been funded in the building department under the consultant, and I believe it was like $12,000. We're just moving it to the salary, and it's actually less. The person's getting a $7,000 stipend per year to do that service, so we're actually saving money. The town accountant position, the internal auditor is being added to that department. It was part of the, it was a direct report to the town manager before. Bill's requesting that that position be added to his department. The town manager's line, this is not a person, it's a consultant, but I felt like it was the right person to put it. It was the right spot to put it on the positions. The DEI consultant, as you heard earlier in the presentation, we put a consultant line in the town manager department. Public works, Paul is adamant about this position. Paul was hired as the associate DPW superintendent previously. That was his position before he took the director of public works position. He wants to zero out that line and put a position that's more reflective of what he needs in his department, called fleet manager slash facilities assistant. So Paul will still be in charge of the high-level facilities planning, the capital planning, you know, the roof repairs, the big picture stuff. And the day-to-day stuff will, this position will help him out on a facility standpoint and be the fleet manager, which is a need in his department now that he has a fleet management department. Assessors, this is somebody who's already working in the assessors department, the data collector. They're going from four days a week to five days a week, which was a need in that department. It's always been a need, but this particular person just couldn't make his schedule work over the last few years. Now, he's able to make it work. Development services, in the engineering department, we're literally just renaming a position. The position's called meeting wages. The person does more than meeting wages. They do secretarial work for development services, and they do meeting minutes. So we're just renaming it development services secretary. So there's no change in money or anything like that. Reclassifications of existing positions. These are people who work here now, currently have jobs in our town. There's several of them. The town accountant department, we're going from a senior clerk to a program admin one to reflect the current duties the person's doing. We have job descriptions for these two types of positions. The person is doing program admin work now, and we just want to reflect that properly. The fire department, they have a program admin one, and he's requesting that this position goes to the office administrator, because that's what this person is doing in his office currently, pretty much the office manager in his office. And we know it's a pretty large department. Does grant writing, manages the FEMA program, the FEMA grant program, things of that nature. Veterans office has a senior clerk position, and that's moving to a program admin one for the same reason. Again, her current duties that she's working on reflect something of a program admin one, not a senior clerk two. Human resources, there's a program admin two position in that department, and obviously, for the same reason I just explained to you, they're doing office administrator work. The program coordinator in that department is now doing things like contract negotiations. She's been involved with union contracts, doing things that she hasn't worked on in the past, and her other duties are now kind of rolling downhill to the office administrator. Development services, last year, you saw the program admin one go to an office administrator in that office. What's happening now with the retirement to the building department, which is in development services, that person's been here for a while, has the intuitive knowledge. The building department has two things they do now. They have the building permit side, and then they have the ZBA side, taking in the ZBA applications, processing them, doing that kind of thing. The new person coming in, we just want them to focus on building permits. We want the building department to be building permits and inspections. We're pulling the zoning out, and we're going to have it with the person who does the planning board, receives all the planning board applications. Zoning and planning go together very well and should be together. In the past, the zoning, there was actually a separate person for zoning, taking in zoning applications in the building department. So we're actually increasing that person's hours, because she's just going to need more hours to do her work. And I think we all know who this person is. She is the most phenomenal person, and I'm bipartisan because she works in development services, but I just know her very well. She works hard. This is somebody we never want to lose to another town. Treasurer collector's office, the Treasurer collector's office, department head salary. Again, this person's come over the last year or two. I think she started off with Robin asking for a salary comp because she felt like she was underpaid for her position. We went through the HR process for this, the very detailed process they have. They do a salary comp. Several other surrounding towns, we can get you the information if you request it. She's going from somewhere in the mid-90s to 105, which is about the price for a treasurer collector in this area. Cedar Hill, the department head salary increase. Again, this was another situation where he requested his salary be compared to other department heads of his nature. This is tougher because there's not a lot of municipal golf courses around, but he did do the research. Our HR department did the research, did the comparables, and his salary went up accordingly. Recreation, there is a person in recreation now who is a program facilitator, and because that department's becoming more active, they're coordinating more programs than ever, the program coordinator there currently, the department head, can't do it all. He needs help. So this person's already doing program coordinator work in the rec department. So again, this is just being reflective of the duties this person already does. So those are the several reclassifications of existing positions in several departments. I'll try to go through this relatively quickly. I know, Deborah, you sort of mentioned that you wanted the higher-level presentation. What I tried to do here was go through all the pertinent departments that had any semi-substantial changes to any lines in their department and list it. It's not changes to every line, it's just the more substantial ones. I'll go through it relatively quickly. All departments have gone down for advertising costs. We mentioned that. That's just across the board. Buyout lines are zero in all departments across the board. Moderator department, temporary wages went down $4,200. That's going to move to the clerk's office. There's been discussions, and that already happens. That already gets funded out of that department. It's just a shift of where the funds are going. The town manager line, we got the DEI consultant in that department. Finance committee line, they have not used a temporary wage line, so we treated them like any other department. And we went through the process we did with other departments. If you have not used your line, you know, and we looked at actuals, they have not used that line. I think it was $10,000, Dave, and we put it down to $7,500, which we think will still be sufficient if they want to hire a secretary for the book, if that was what your choice Consultant fees, we dropped that down a bit. We looked at the actuals. The town actually has consulting fees through the town manager's office. We felt that was the proper way to budget our legal fees is through that line. Centralized purchasing, discussions were fraying, and the rest of the budget team, we feel that the telephone and photostat lines can be dropped down to reflect actual costs. Assessors department, the reevaluation year, we had to add $7,000 for that cost. The ATB court cases, we added $3,000. And the appraisal services, we dropped by $10,000. This is something we had a discussion with the assessor that's currently in there that you've met the other night, not the person we just hired, but Deborah, the company, and she looked at the department's budget and felt comfortable with these numbers. Treasurer collector's office, they did some reductions in their land registration recording fees of $30,000, and the postage had to go up $5,000. The last three are just carryovers from the previous slide. Those are typos, we already talked about those. Police, they increased their consultant fees by $32,000 to increase, to continue their services with the PR firm they have. Radio repairs and services went up $11,000 because they have to repair those. Could that be a capital item? Possibly, but it's $11,000. In that particular case, we felt like we could keep it in the budget for that department. Office supplies, building supplies went up $8,000. Fire department, they're implementing cancer screening, which I thought was a good addition to their department budget of $20,000. Self-contained breathing units need to get repaired. Those are $14,000. And the PPE, the costs have gone up on that. That's $10,000. Building department, we already talked about, we're able to reduce the seal of weights and measures line item by 10,000 because we're moving seven up to the salary line to pay the stipend for the person doing it. Southeastern Regional, we estimated the annual fees to be 5%, which equates to a $67,000 increase in that line. That number may change once we get the actuals back. Norfolk County Agricultural, the annual fees, we've looked at the trends, we looked at last year's actuals, we can reduce that by $30,000. Engineering, this department, this horrible department. This one, we added $75,000 because every year we get the question about the MS4 Stonewater article that we have. We always get the requests, especially from the finance committee, and it's been from the select board in the past, that if you come to our town meeting every year for an article, then it probably should be in your operating budget. And they got a point. So very difficult to fit that in this year for obvious reasons. So that's something we can consider taking out, but it would have to go back to an article situation. But again, it's something we need to do every year. So they're right, it should be in the operating budget for, and this year, the cost is $75,000. Public Works, they went down by 10,000 on their Stonewater maintenance. They feel that the number is adequate by taking 10,000 off. Public Works, facilities division, obviously electricity's gone up, so they increased their line for that. They were able to decrease their gas estimate by 30,000. They were looking at actuals. Building repairs and services, add $15,000. Just the price of supplies have gone up, obviously. They're adding 7,000 to their consultant line for the energy person that we have. She's currently funded at 8,000, and we're going to move her to 7,000. She's been very capable and a huge asset to our town to have on board. She's one of the key point of contacts for our municipal aggregation program, as you know, amongst other things. Building repairs supplies, minus 9,000. Public Works, street lighting, electricity, plus 15,000. Fleet maintenance, we have to add for, because the price of materials have gone up for vehicle maintenance, 17,000. We're actually able to drop the gasoline, oil, and grease line down by 27,000 based on actuals and what our costs are. Vehicle maintenance supplies, minus 15,000. Public Works, waste disposal and sanitation. I know, thank you. Is it obvious that I'm like getting dried out over here? Cynthia, I'm getting like dry-mouthed, and she came over, she saved me. Thank you, Cynthia. I was getting dry-mouthed, and she noticed it. All right. Veteran services, Sean knows what the expenses are for the benefits. We have to increase that line by 35,000 to cover the costs. Commission on Disabilities, as you know, they came in front of you, asked for a $7,000 line item. Your board endorsed that, so we added it to the budget, mostly for office supplies and public outreach and things of that nature. Recreation, there's some modest increases, one decrease of office supplies, a modest increase in grounds maintenance, because the cost of fertilizer and things like that have gone up. Community events, police details, they've added $6,000. I believe that is for the fireworks. Sewer department, the big thing out of this department is the MWRA fee. They believe that fee can go down $51,610 based on the actuals and previous year's assessments. The water department, electricity's gone up 29,000. Hydrant purchases have gone up 10,000. That's mostly due to cost increases for those items. Chemicals have gone up 150,000 due to the water treatment plant upgrades that we've recently done. Water meters, he's added 25,000. He has a very, he really wants to ramp up the water meter program, and he, there may be an article at this town meeting to bring that back, the water meters. You'll see the benefits for that in the future. I won't get into the details right now. Laboratory fees, testing our water samples from our water treatment plants, they've gone up. That's an increase of 10,000. Okay. Cedar Hill, electricity has gone up $3,800. Golf cart rentals up 5,000. Purchases of his services have gone down 3,300. And last but not least, the cable public access department, their contract services have gone up 79,385. As you know, that's a pass-through, but we do have to pay for it as a town. Now, moving forward, some future budget goals to work on that I think are going to be starting to get us on the right track where we need to go. We do need a five-year capital plan, and we know Mr. Gito's been very adamant about that, and he's been asking me a lot about it. I felt very bad that I have not given him the document yet. I think he's starting to think I'm lying to him. But that is a work in progress. It's very close to being completed. I think once we get this next week or two under our belt with Mr. Coulter over here, that'll be one of the things I'll ask him if he would like me to work on. So I believe very soon we'll have that done. It's already in progress. Get a better understanding of the water and sewer enterprise accounts. We're already doing that now. I think we have a pretty good understanding of where the issues are with that. There's still some work to do. Establish a sustainable financial plan for healthcare for the reasons I explained early in the presentation. Our costs are just through the roof right now. What we're putting into the account is not paying our costs. Continue our economic development initiatives in the town to increase growth. There's some zoning changes that we have lined up for the Campagnelli Industrial Park for the Route 27 corridor. I know the planning board's looking at Route 138, things of that nature. All that will allow us to build higher and better uses in those corridors, and that equates to new growth. On the good news is there's been a lot of new projects lined up that have been coming into town. We had the Milton Cat. We have a hotel that's looking to add, you know, 80 rooms right near Milton Cat. We have a tofu factory that just went online right where the smack operation is. Right down the street, there's a warehouse building proposed to be constructed, a relatively large one. There's some other developments planned right in the downtown here. There's a lot of good things happening from a growth standpoint. And last but not least, this is probably a goal every year, but increased efficiencies throughout the budget where needed. It's a very general statement, but we're always looking to increase efficiencies in the budget. So I hope I didn't lose anybody, nobody fell asleep, but I know towards the end it got kind of boring there. But that's the initial budget presentation. I know you're probably all going to have specific questions on the budget, line, you know, department by department, line by line. I don't know. But we're here to answer any questions. I know I've probably used up most of your time, so you may want to consider that for a future board meeting, or you may want to ask the questions now. It's up to you.
So do our current board members want to at least ask one question to get us started in knowing that next week and the following week, this will be agenda items? So I see Mr. Carrara said, he raised his hand to make a comment. I recognize Mr. Carrara.
Well, I had spoken to Mr. Cavey, and I was wondering if we were going to have time to digest this. I don't want to be throwing questions out right after we just saw that. I'd like to sit on them, and then if the next meeting, we could, I would be better prepared to iron out. I got a lot of questions, believe me. And just asking one tonight is just like, I might as well just throw the book on the floor. I'd rather, where we just had this budget, the budget that we were given, you could barely read it. I was glad we got the, I call it the finance budget, so you can actually tell what's going on. And I think we should go on with the agenda and let this relax for a minute and give these gentlemen time to relax too, so that they'll be as prepared as we are.
Thank you very much. That was my plan of tack as well. Does everyone else agree with that? All righty. So with that said, oh, you can, I heard two voices, so I think I heard Mr. Gito and Mr. Carrara at the same time.
I was thanking them for the Max presentation. It was very good.
Yes, it was very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Gito.
The presentation was very good. I don't think it's responsible of us to not have the five-year plan in terms of all of the things that need to be done, put out in a column. We don't have to have funding sources for each of those, but we have reports on water that shows that we need to spend $5 million a year for maintenance. We have a highway report that shows that we have about a $22 million backlog in major work that needs to be done. I'm not sure about the sewer work that we need to do, but those things need to be understood and factored into how we discuss the finances of the town. We have been putting off for years any discussion of a capital plan that deals with keeping up the things that people for the last 100 years have been developing in this town. The water and sewer lines have been in for a long time, and we have not been maintaining them to our detriment because we have seen that by not taking care of things, it costs more money year after year. It's irresponsible, I will say that again, irresponsible to not have that information available for the people in this town to know. They, the people in the town, are the government, not us. We are overseers of what goes on, and the town manager and the people who work for the town manager are implementers of the things that the town wants done. But we have to tell them what it is that's in front of them or what we're not doing. They can see in the facilities master plan that we've been having for the last 10 or 15 years, the buildings that are in disrepair because they're above ground. They can walk through those buildings and see the deterioration and the need for things to be fixed, but they don't see the things that are under the ground. They drive through the town on the streets and know that there are problems there. They come and complain about those problems, and hardly anything gets done. So I expect, I expect by the next meeting that we have to have the list of the things that need to be done in the maintenance from the water department reports, from the highway department reports, sewer department if we have them, and any others, so that we can begin to address those issues, not in the capital, I mean, the operating budget here, but in terms of looking at the capital items that we need to deal with and how we are going to start to talk about the finances in the town responsibly. So that's my little speech. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gito. And that, I agree with what Mr. Gito was saying, and I guess a starting place would be the list of the town capital projects that Mr. Tisdale is working from, and I guess he gave it. He's prioritizing the list, and it starts with Route 139 Bridge Project Design Phase, Canton and School Intersection Improvements, Park and Turnpike Seat, Washington Street and Improvements, Town Hall Landscape, Trail Improvement, Online Permitting, ADA Improvement for the Lucius Clap, Traffic Calming on Walnut Street, where we have that under control now because it's been addressed, Quiet Zone Improvements, the Armory Building Stabilization. So that's just to name a few. And so I think we'll start discussing that in the next meeting, and then the future meetings until we get it all solid and we all agree. Yes, Mr. Tisdale, and then Vice Chair Cave.
You are correct. I've been compiling a spreadsheet, all departments submitted to me their capital for this year, not necessarily the five-year, capital for this year, and all the articles that we'll have at town meeting. You know, the first 15 are typically, you know, the same articles. So this spreadsheet you're going to get for your next meeting and your next packet will list all the articles I received two days. There's like 10 from the CPC. I've been discussing them with the CPC. So I think the, pretty comprehensive. Obviously, your board, and we heard a couple articles potentially tonight, will add to that spreadsheet. I think the goal, the goal of the next meeting will be to go through those items, talk about what the subject is and what the cost is. As long as the board seems to, you know, want to go along with that, we can actually give you all the detailed backup information later on. That typically happens in January, when we actually get a draft warrant together for you. Right now, it's just high level. Here's the subject matter, and here's the cost. If that's okay with your board.
That sounds like a great plan. Vice Chair Cave.
Thanks. I don't have any questions about this. I was just going to take my time and just digest it all. I do appreciate the presentation. It was very thoughtfully crafted and sort of provides a lot of information, I think, very well. You know, what I especially am thankful for is the highlighting of some of the key areas that we're going to have to consider in the next, you know, three to five years, that I think you pointed out as essentially water and sewer, plus our healthcare costs, which I know have been in the horizon, people have been worrying about it for a little while. I think the water sewer is kind of at least catching me a little bit by surprise, but it is one of our more successful departments. I think we have excellent people in the department. I think we'll get our heads around it, and we'll figure it out. So I appreciate that level of information. The one thing I also had forgotten that we really had was the Energy Sustainability Manager. That was something that the Energy Sustainability Committee had proposed many years ago. They, I think originally brought it as an article to town meeting, but then pulled that and said, spoke directly to Dr. Grimm, who I think was excited about the idea, but our budgets were tight, especially tight at the time, and was, she was able to find ways of getting somebody in the door, you know, essentially. And so I'm, you know, the thought was, they would be able to pull in enough grants that they could, you know, very much justify the reason for being here. And so, from what I've heard tonight, it sounds like that actually happened, the person who's in, got their foot in the door, and has proven that that was a very, you know, useful position to fill. So, for the Energy Sustainability Committee, thanks again. Great work. Yeah, I think they, I want to speak to them next chance I get, just to let them know that if they haven't already caught it up here, that, you know, that something they had advocated very heavily for, for a couple of years, really paid off. So that's great to hear. Otherwise, I just want to thank you very much for putting this together and for presenting it.
So, thank you very much. So moving right along to the next agenda item, which is agenda item number seven. And before we start, Attorney Kate Federoff has joined us.
Hello, how are you?
Well, hello, how are you doing?
I'm wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, glad to see you. The Code of Conduct and Ethics, which is our Conflict of Interest policy, is the same one we reviewed during our November 15 meeting. At that time, we were pretty much okay with the policy, but one question came up. Is this for all staff, even if they're in a union? And we took a stop, we reconvened with our attorney, and we said that we would have to bargain with the unions. We'll have to give notice and an opportunity to bargain with them. So that was the last thing on the line that, not an issue, but yes, something that we wanted to consider. The question was, should we include that commentary in, directly in the policy? But Attorney Kate Federoff developed another plan of attack, which was an addendum or an attachment, so you could present it to the unions. But with that said, I'll just hand the mic over to Attorney Federoff, so she can talk to that issue.
Yeah, so essentially, when you're affecting a term or condition of employment, there is an obligation on the town to provide notice and opportunity, and I believe that's the agenda. I don't, I don't see what you're looking at, but I believe that's the addendum that you're speaking about. Essentially, you notify the unions that this is a policy that you're intending on implementing, and should they want to bargain, they may. Sometimes, depending upon what the policy says, the unions don't avail themselves of that policy, of that opportunity, and they'll just accept it because many of the things listed in this policy are already requirements. So the conflicts section relative to 268A, union members, non-union members, boards, committee members, they're all equally bound by 268A, which is the Conflict of Interest laws. But, you know, sometimes there are things that are raised during bargaining, like how are things investigated, other kinds of details in the process and implementation of that policy. So if the board would like, we could reach out to the unions with that policy as proposed, and a notice of opportunity, and we'll let you know if they have comments or concerns. The other option is you could put into the policy a proviso which says essentially if this is in conflict with a provision in a collective bargaining agreement or employment contract, that those agreements will supersede. You could, you could do it that way either. But I guess what we need is some direction from the board that should you want this to apply to union employees, we will go ahead and offer them the opportunity to bargain.
Yeah, Mr. Carrera.
The actual question I asked was because in their unions right now, they, they review, it gets reported to somebody at the top, they review it, they discipline their own. So they're really not following any state policy. They have bargained in their own. If we have to bargain in something with them, I don't want it to become a money item like everything else becomes a money item. Defibrillators money item, this money item. If they're going to stand by the fact that they're going to discipline their own, I think we're going to have to, you know, not offer them anything, because I don't want to impact bargain. I don't want to add money anywhere to pay people for doing something wrong that we're going to investigate. That's ridiculous, and that's what it's going to come down to, is money.
Right. Yeah, so, so be mindful that just because there's an obligation to bargain doesn't necessarily mean that money gets attached to everything. And I'll give you a, for example, I had an issue where a department was going to have to pump their own gas, as opposed to having a gas attendant, right? And I had all of my unions say they wanted to bargain it, and I was surprised because I pumped my own gas, and I didn't think it was a big deal. But the interesting thing part about that bargaining session were the fact that the union raised several operational issues that the parking or the gas pump attendant performed, which were issues for them. How are those duties going to be performed? So it wasn't actually a money issue, it was an operational issue and questions that may arise. But to the extent the board doesn't want to attach money to this, to this policy, I understand completely. It doesn't mean that you don't want to try to sit down and see if there's some common ground that you could negotiate with the unions. But I understand your point completely, and I think it's a valid one.
So where do we go from here? We can include it, and I guess the language I'm trying to figure out is if there is, if they have, if the union has their own set of policies, then it doesn't supersede this one. So ours is presented.
It wouldn't supersede theirs.
Yeah, we wouldn't supersede theirs. So this is the policy, but this policy doesn't supersede theirs until they, you know, if we want to put some language in there in that regard. So what is another option?
So that's, that's really, really what the law would be, that if there were conflicting, if there were conflicting terms, so if there was a term in this policy that conflicted with the collective bargaining agreement, the collective bargaining agreement, the terms of that agreement would prevail. And if you wanted to say that expressly in the policy to give some people comfort that we are aware of that requirement, that's perfectly fine, and we can add to it. If you want this applicable to union employees, we'll give them notice and opportunity to bargain, and then depending upon what the union's concerns are, I could come back to you in executive session and present those concerns and possible modifications to the policy. So that's, that's one option, if we give them the notice and opportunity to bargain, if you wanted to apply to them. And the other thing I kind of, and maybe I'm getting confused by your terminology, but union members don't discipline each other, right? So that's a management practice. The management disciplines the employees. So if a union member engages in misconduct, the union is never going to discipline the employee. That's not their responsibility, that's a management function.
Okay. I saw Mr. Carrera and Town Manager Coulter, Mr. Coulter's hand as well. So who wants to go first, doesn't it?
Attorney Federoff, if we made this like a new hire policy, when we hire somebody and part of their coming through the door would have to be, while they're on probation, we hand them this policy and says, this will take full bore after your six months or seven months, and now it is a policy of your new hire. They'd get, would that be like an option to them? They can say, well, then I don't want the job, or it just gets folded in with the package, the hiring package? Could you do that?
Well, certainly, you can have this among the documents that you have your new employee sign. That said, to the extent, I don't know if you're talking about union personnel or non-union personnel, but to the extent that the application of this policy would apply to members, and typically, the way it works is that you have the benefit of the bargain even during your probationary period, except for termination protection, right? So you still are benefited as a union member. So to the extent the application of that policy is affecting its members, that's where the notice and opportunity is triggered. Am I making myself clear?
Mr. Coulter, yes.
Madam Chair, and Kate, I would be concerned about having two different codes of conduct for union versus non-union people. So my recommendation is that we give them constructive notice of our desire to implement this policy, and then give them the opportunity, which they have a right to, impact bargain. But I would agree with Mr. Carrera, to not be in a position where it's a trade-off for wages. It's something we intend to do town-wide or for all town employees, and then give them that opportunity. In many cases, I, my bet is about 50% of the time, they're just going to accept the town policy as stated, and the other time, they may want to impact bargain. And I have no problem with that impact bargaining process. That's their right, and we're used to doing it.
For sure. And I agree, you don't want two competing policies.
Right.
And it could be, I mean, no pride in authorship, I actually didn't write it, it's someone else in my office wrote, but no pride in authorship. Sometimes, there are situations where the union will, will ask a question, and you'll realize there's a provision in that policy that isn't crystal clear, and let's clarify it.
Exactly.
On the front end, rather than having an unclear policy on the back end when you're trying to apply it to an employee. Hundred percent, Tom.
So follow-up, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Coulter, and then Vice Chair.
I think timing is everything right now. We've got four contracts that are in force right now, but coming up next June, and we've got four, three or four that we're trying to bring closure to right now. So we can, we can try, and if notice goes out to the union leaders, that can be an agenda item for all of the bargaining units in the next six months. So timing is important. If the board chooses to adopt the code and the policy, the timing couldn't be better to send out that letter from council to the union leaders of our intent to impose, not impose, to enforce that policy, that Code of Conduct. I think it's a great discussion and a great bargaining point.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Cave?
Thanks. So I'll just, you know, I guess more or less echo what other people have said. I like to use this opportunity as a chance to kind of learn, you know, what, how this might impact the unions in a way that perhaps I didn't anticipate. I don't foresee them necessarily rejecting a request that we, you know, hold them to ethical standards, unless they get more money. There's something that's sort of ironic about that, right? So I want to sort of assume that they'll understand the spirit with which we bring this, and that they'll reciprocate with some thoughtful, either accepting or some thoughtful commentary. So I just want to say I look forward to what they have to say about it.
Thank you very much. I'm going to just look to my left and see if Mr. Gito or Mr. McCrisky have any comments. So I think we're all set. I'm, oh, yeah, Mr. Carrera.
Not anymore on the union thing. There was just something in the packet I didn't know if we should. Under, well, the pages aren't numbered, so it's a little hard.
Yeah, it's a little hard.
And I would hope they'd be numbered, so when it becomes a document, we go, oh, page six, section 2.8.
Right. I hear you.
Is that section numbered?
No. Oh, yeah. Under applicability.
Section three.
Yep.
Applicability, I see it. This policy is in its section, shall apply to boards, presiding officers, public officials, commissions and committees.
It's the last, last paragraph which would carry over onto the next page. It says, "All of the terms used herein including commission members, committee members, board members, representatives appointed by the board, or town manager, and other officials mentioned in the guidelines are subject to this policy." Should we add in consultants too?
It's a question for Kate.
Through you, Madam Chairman, to the Attorney Federoff. Do you- Do you think we should add in consultants? Because, you know, different committees all have the right to hire in and reach out to a different, and they should be included in this so that they don't berate somebody at an open meeting either.
Certainly you can. So to the extent you want to, you can, and then every consultant, see, you have to be mindful that your consultants are aware of what your policies are that are applicable to them. Naturally, the consultants are going to abide by 268A at the base level, but to the extent you want to just notify them when you hire them, okay, by the way, you're subject to this policy, but we could add them in, no problem.
I just think that's a safe venue.
I think so, too. That's true, because they would have to sign off on our conflict of interest, anyway. Thank you. So that's an addition. I'm open to accepting a motion with adding those two items.
I'll make the motion, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you so very much. The next agenda item is final. Ms. Brutinelli, if you would step forward, please. This is the item number eight, Fire Station Proprietary List Proprietary Specifications Memo.
And I'll just take my leave.
Oh, yes. Thank you so very much.
Thank you for having me, and I hope to see you soon, and if I don't see you before the holidays, have a happy holiday.
Have a happy holiday to you as well. Bye-bye, good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Fran. Please state your name and your title, please.
Sure. I'm Fran Brutini. I'm the procurement officer for the Town of Stoughton, and I did want to mention Glenn Gallard from Dorn Whittier, our architect for the fire station project, is here virtually, and there he is right online. And we're here tonight because we're at a point in the project that we have to prepare the bid documents, we're going out to bid, and we have proprietary specifications, just basically a brand name, and we have to follow some statutory requirements when we want to use a brand name. And to summarize just the memo, we need to present sound reasons in the public interests when we do call out the 10 items that are, you know, following.
Yes, Mr. Gito, it's item number eight. You don't have it? Does everyone have item eight?
It's on the tab.
I do.
Oh, thank you. I did, too. You have one?
So there are, on each page, there's a list, and part of the requirements that we have to follow, and it's listed in the memo, is the governmental body, the Select Board, has to make a determination to use the proprietary specs through a vote, and we've listed these, and they can be signed off on, or voted on and signed off, or not. And then we have to keep the written documentation with the bid documents, we have to submit it with the bid documents. So basically, we have to, we brought this forward just to follow consistency with the products that we currently use, and compatibility, and sometimes there's security reasons that we need to use proprietary specs. And on the, it's page two, it's page three of the package, but it starts on the page two at the bottom, listed on the bottom, the sectional doors. It's just a product, the Wayne Dalton overhead doors, or Clopay overhead doors, and then there's a reason that we need specifically that brand. So how do you, I don't know how you want to go.
So is the request, is the request for us to read where it says the awarding authority, and then take a vote on that, or what do you need from us?
Yes, that's all we, if you want to, that's the sound reason that we're giving, that why we have to use the above-mentioned specifications.
Okay. I think that would work for us.
Okay.
Vice Chair, Kavy.
It might take a little time, but we'll start with the first one.
Okay. I can just, it's right here. I can just summarize. It just says, "The awarding authority for the Stoughton Fire Station Number One Project hereby finds and determines, after discussion with Dorn Whittier Architects, the project architect, as presented above, and after reasonable investigation in other feasible alternatives, that it is in the best interest of the owner, the town, and the public at large to have certain portions of the work, being the 5200 series insulated overhead doors by Wayne Dalton and the 3,728 series insulated overhead doors by Clopay, be included in the specifications for the project as proprietary-based specifications." And above that, it says, it's specifically about these doors provide, they provide, or they meet the hurricane windborne debris impact ratings. Glenn would definitely know more than on that, why we need this type of door.
Yeah, Fran, I think you got off to a good start here. Generally, we need to ask for or request a proprietary item if there aren't three makers, you know, A, B, C, or equal effectively. Mass General Law Public Bid requires that we put at least three options or alternatives for the doorknob, a sink, a chair. Overhead doors, for instance, obviously there are more than two manufacturers, but these are the only two that meet both the Massachusetts Energy Code and the Windborne Debris Code. If there were others that could do that as well, we'd be happy to have other options. So that's one example of frankly, a limited number of suppliers that can provide the products that meet the project specifications. The other group of objects or materials are really more focused on the town's security and safety, things like door lock standards and, you know, security cameras and that sort of software-related stuff. That's proprietary because you guys use a system that should be consistent throughout the town for first responders, for, you know, accuracy and location, and all that sort of stuff. But we could go through each item if you want, but they aren't really either in one category or the other, if that makes sense.
Thank you very much. I did not catch your name, and for the record, what is it?
My apologies, Madam Chair. Glenn Gallred, project manager from Dorn Whittier Architects.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair, Kavy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I, you know, so I read through all these, I agree with, you know, everything makes perfect sense to me. I'm really mostly concerned with how do we have to, how do we, you've got 10 of them. How do we make the motion? Can I, do I have to do these individually, or can I just do them?
They have to be signed off individually, so I, what we could do is just read the page, sectional doors, the product, and then you can vote, have any questions, and then vote on it. Why don't we do it that way, instead of reading the same words over and over and over?
I'll make a motion to approve the 10 proprietary, proprietary items presented by our procurement office.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much.
That was very, almost too weak.
Thank you.
Making it harder for me.
Yes, Mr. Coulter.
What we just did, which I completely support. We've got a very competent architect who's made recommendations. He's got a long history of public works projects. We've got a very competent procurement officer. Is this subject to 30B?
No, this is 149.
So she knows the statute in which we have to comply with. They're the experts in the room. I strongly support what the Board just did.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving right along to...
Wait it all night.
I was just thinking that.
It was the cliffhanger.
I know why you need American dollars.
I'll have a ring of fire next time. We're trying to help the ante.
And we'll facilitate getting the signatures.
Yeah.
Oh, great, thank you.
And the next agenda is the 128 billboard policy. I want to give you a little highlight and then ask for it to be tabled. This is the first time this policy is coming before the Board. We have not presented it page by page, section by section, but in summary, this, the company that has the billboard, we are already in contract with, we have been in contract for many years. Part of the contract is the use of their billboard. We have never fully exercised our right within the contract. So Pam McCarthy took the lead to develop a policy. She discussed it with the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee just for a second set of eyes, and then she wanted to present it to us. And with that said, another highlight is, that is going to be pointed out, is who will have use of the billboard and what will be the process. So the recommendation is that the billboard will be limited to departments, Town of Stoughton departments, boards, commissions, and committees. And then I wanted to hand the baton over to Mr. Tisdale in case he had a little extra information to share, and then I want to recognize Mr. Carrera, and then Vice Chair, Kavy.
Is that working? Oh, there we go. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. In summary, this agreement that was in place for the town that used the billboard was part of a ZBA decision, yeah, thank you, was part of a ZBA decision years back when the sign got permitted. The town actually gets 20 hours of time we can utilize for that sign, and actually, the company that we have the contract with will actually do the graphic design for us. So it's a really good connection. We've never utilized it, to the best of my knowledge. I think there's eight hours they say can be used for public safety, and there's 20 hours for whatever else we want to use. So there needs to be some sort of organized process on how do we use the sign, if we choose to use the sign. Who posts to it? So there's not this hodgepodge of anybody's just throwing things on the sign. Get a nice organized policy, and then an application procedure in place for that policy. And then it's up to your Board to decide if you want these to come in front of your Board for approval, or if you want to delegate that to the Town Manager to make the call and approve that. It's something that your Board should discuss, but Pam's been pointing this. I think the SEOC Committee wanted to utilize the sign.
Yes.
With messages on it. So I think that's why this came to light, which is great. So formalizing a policy, getting an application in place is, I think, a very good idea.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carrera.
Is this, which sign is this actually? Is it a 187-page street or something?
Yes.
Yep. I had wondered what, when this was going to come true, because I had heard that we had use of it, but I was like, never saw anything that was laid out, so I just let it roll. But when I saw a 128 billboard, I says, geez, that's Route 24 policy, so that shouldn't be there, and we'd understand what it is, but I think it's a good thing we should look into and figure out who will be the lead approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, Kavy.
The only comment I was going to make was that, you know, that a strong policy is critical. Unfortunately, if we are loosey-goosey with this, then we could end up obliged to put things on a billboard that we do not support in the slightest. So having a strong set of standards and a policy in place protects us all from ourselves, and we can, but I, was it Pam McCarthy who actually dug this up and found this?
Yes.
Amazing. I mean, I'm so thankful, because I, it's one of those things that would have otherwise disappeared into obscurity, like nobody would have known they ever had a right to this. So I appreciate, I don't know if she's on, I don't know if she's not on, but I just appreciate Pam McCarthy's work on this.
Thank you. So, oh, Mr.?
Madam Chair, may I suggest that the administrative office, the Town Manager's office draft a policy for the Board to consider?
Yes.
Happy to do so.
So other than the one that was in our packet tonight?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Didn't even see that.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I apologize.
No worries. So can I have a motion to table this item until next week? May I have a second? All in favor? And I vote aye as well. Okay. Thank you. So the Board will be entering into executive?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, motion to approve consent agenda item?
Amendments emailed by Mr. Gito.
All in favor? Those amendments were made, yeah, by Lena? Yes, uh-huh, without a hitch. So motion is on the table. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay. The Board will be entering into executive session to discuss the snowplow contract, discuss the strategy with respect to negotiation, with respect to litigation pursuant to GL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, Design Land Construction versus Town of Stoughton. That's the summons, the order of plaintiff's motion for reconsideration, memorandum of decision, and order on plaintiff's motion for summary judgment, and also approval of executive session minutes of November 7, 2022. I make a finding that discussing these items in open session may be detrimental to the town's negotiation or litigation position. Therefore, they will be discussed in executive session. We will not be returning into open session, but will adjourn from executive session. Do I have a motion to go adjourn to executive session? May I have a second? And I will take a poll. Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Kavy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, everyone, and good evening. Thank you.